The Parker Town Council at 7:19 PM on February 7th. Just as a point of personal privilege, a week ago, we lost who is arguably Parker's People's Mayor, the favorite mayor, David Cassiano. It was sudden and his family has kept it very close and has created a family affair. But one thing that I think if you know David Cassiano, you know he loves our country and he certainly loved the Pledge of Allegiance. So tonight, as we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, let us do it not only in honor of our country, but in honor of Parker's fifth mayor, David Cassiano, a great guy who I know has touched all of our lives. So would you please stand with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. We have tonight, we have a special presentation to one of my favorite people in Parker. So President Clint Wait, could you join me down here? And Laura, would you join me? God, I see Clint Wait in you. I'm sorry. Chad Larson. You're the much more handsome of the two. You're the... Laura, do you want to join me too?
Yes. Oops, sorry.
Need to loose on here.
I could have tried to pull these chairs if I just screwed up.
This is President Chad Larson of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints in the Parker State. And, you know, we, I have to tell you that this has been a little bit of crazy week. So we have your certificate upstairs and there'll just be one more chance to get to visit with me. So we'll take it. But, you know, oh, it's coming down now. So I'll just, I'll tap dance a little bit. You know, Chad Larson has been a friend to so many people, certainly to me, to my family, to Councilmember Hefta who nominated for this. But, you know, back to Mayor Cassiano, back to him as well. Yes, yes. But, you know, one of the things his congregation does for all of Parker is service. And, you know, we, Friday, we heard about, all about service. We turn about service to our community and what they do. I don't think we'll ever know exactly what your church does in terms of service. You participated in the Mayor's Day of Service and got, you know, a thousand folks out on our trails cleaning them up. But why don't you tell a little bit, a couple of other service projects that you guys are involved in right now?
Well, we've, one of the things we, I just, first of all, want to thank Mayor Cohort and also all the members of the City Council. We have seven congregations here in the Parker area. There's about 15, including a little bit south. And we all love the town of Parker. And we love serving. We have been involved in the Mayor's Day of Service, but we've also been involved over time. We've been very instrumental in the teacher appreciation for all of our educators and from the schools that the mayors have participated in over the years and a number of other ongoing service opportunities. Our, the members of our congregation love to serve. And so we always meet with the town council, say, when you have projects, when you have things, just let us know. We'll partner, we'll get people out, we can get people out and accomplish some great things. So I appreciate the opportunity we've had to do that and just appreciate all the work the town has done to keep Parker a community that we all love and appreciate being in Parker.
Just greatly appreciate their contributions to the Parker Task Force in any type of emergency that comes up. This organization has been instrumental in helping people in Parker and greatly appreciate it. Thank you so much.
And I would just think, I see one of the police officers here. We did have, there was a missing child by the Chaparral High School several months ago. And we used our building there across from Chaparral as the staging area. And we had more police and SWAT people in and out. We had members come and bringing them food and it was just a pleasure. And I will just say, all of our interaction with the employees and the people of the town of Parker has just been outstanding and we just appreciate it so much.
That's awesome. Well, let me read you this. So this is on behalf of the whole town council. "A certificate of recognition awarded to the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints in the Parker State for the exceptional community service given to the residents of Parker. Signed by me on February 7th." And it's a pleasure to be with you.
Appreciate the courtesy.
Thank you.
Hey, nice to see you again.
You know, one of the... So for all you that are shy, is the line is the green behind the Mayor's Day of Service and the brawn and the driver's. Don't eat too much.
One more.
No, who am I getting so much?
Okay, one more, just a little closer.
Awesome. So one of the, just to add another, one of the things that President Chad's church does for us, and I think Laura's got it, I think Todd's got it, Cheryl, has done our genealogy and it's back four generations. So if you ever want to come by and find out why I'm the way I am, you can read the box. It's very fascinating. It's good, I appreciate that. Congratulations.
I don't want to pull it up too far because I can never get them up.
Well, let's see if I can call people by their right name from here on out. And I will go to item number three, Parker Chamber of Commerce updates. TJ Silva making his way.
Good evening, everyone. How are you? Greetings on behalf of the Parker Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. Want to start off my report tonight by acknowledging the start of Black History Month and acknowledging all the contributions of Black Coloradans to our fine state. In terms of report, I want to mention that the website is now live for the Parker Days Festival, which again is June 10th through 12th. The site is now live and anyone who is interested in being involved as a vendor, as an artist, as a performer, as a volunteer, there's a button now on the top of the site in the upper right-hand corner that says Get Involved. And anyone can click there and, you know, offer their services. We have, we're hoping for over 200 vendors this year. Everything from people building birdhouses to making lace to all kinds of stuff. We're really trying to go for really cool, creative stuff that people can't find in other places alongside of some of the stuff you see in lots of other places. But we will, we will be going for that. We're busy signing bands. I'm pretty excited about that. I can't make any announcements. But I will say that anybody who likes the biggest selling act of the 70s will be very happy with one of the bands I signed today. And we're also meeting with town departments, I think seven or 57 different departments about all the different things to do with Parker Days. But we're excited to help the town, the town staff there. They've launched a new permitting and process and we're going to be their great big guinea pig and work with them and somehow make it all happen. So we're pretty excited about that. So thank you to everybody who's helping us move this along. I wanted to let you know that our 2022 Visitors Guides have been published. We've already distributed 3,000 of them throughout the area, all the hotels, all the realtors have been mailed some, et cetera, et cetera. They're all over the place. They're here in Town Hall, they're at the Chamber Office. So we hope that people will find them in their journeys around Parker. I want to acknowledge Rob Nelson, Nelson Designs, for his hard work on that project. That is, I think this is the second year he's done this, done this project and it looks really, really great this year. So we've done three ribbon cuttings since January 1st. This Thursday, February 10th, we will be doing another one at Nest, the boutique on Main Street. We're very excited. That place is so fun. If you haven't been in there, there's so many cool things in there and it's just a great place to just go and blow a lot of money and a lot of time because it's a lot of fun stuff in there. So Thursday at 4:30-ish, 5, I think we're chopping the ribbon. So if you have a chance, please stop by. It should be a lot of fun. We launched our Stronger Business Series, which I mentioned to you in January when I came to you. We had our first seminar. It went very well. We are going to be announcing our next one here soon, all part of our efforts to try to build business resilience in Parker. And the feedback was really good. So I think we're off to a good start on that. I wanted to tell you that we're, a little bit of good news. We've hired another staffer for the chamber. So she will be starting on March 1st. It's an events cord, she's an events coordinator. So she'll be helping us with wine walks and all the different things going on, including our golf tournament, which will be Monday, May 16th at Pradera. Registration is now open and we're looking for sponsors. So finally, before I open for questions, I just want to congratulate Deputy Town Manager Beau Martinez on surviving his first year in Parker. I look forward to joining him if I live that long. So then, thank you very much. Any questions for me?
Not at easy feet.
No, you know, a year seems a long way away, but we might make it.
Awesome. Any questions for TJ? Laura?
I just, just wanted to note, TJ, that, you know, your hard work is really going noticed by a lot of people in the community.
Thank you.
You're revamping the Parker Chamber of Commerce. It needed the leadership change because it wanted a leadership change. I should note that for the record. And I really thank you for stepping up and making these changes and implementing Parker Days again and working as hard as you do to bring your staff together. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you. My goodness. I'll come back next month. Thank you.
Anna, John?
Oh, good.
No questions. Thank you.
No questions.
But again, thank you also for all you do and it's exciting to see a lot of stuff in the future coming.
Thank you, Todd.
Cheryl?
Yeah, just thank you.
Josh?
Thanks, TJ.
Thank you.
All right. Well, hold on, I have two. Can you remind me on Parker Days dates again?
June 10th, 11th and 12th, 2022.
And it's just you and me.
Yes.
Who's, who'd you just sign? What band?
That's John. John'll know.
John, does John know?
Because it's number one selling artist in the 70s. John's got to know.
Yeah. Is it ABBA?
There's a few. Well, I mean, are you talking international?
Cool in the Gang?
Kind of a new kid in town. Everybody's talking.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Okay, I don't, yeah, I'm awesome.
Yeah, very nice.
Awesome. Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a great night.
All right. Up next is the Downtown Business Alliance. Mr. Omar Castillo's here, fresh off of having the now 11-year-old in the house.
I know. It's crazy. Time flies, doesn't it? Good evening, everybody. Omar Castillo, Chairman of the DBA Board. It's great to see everyone again. Seems like I've been seeing a lot of you over the last two or three days, quite a bit in different banners, but nice to be up here again to see you guys. So we just kind of want to go over what we got going on for the month of January and then what we've got going on for, for the month of February. So we started the 2022, January, we started off with strategic planning with Eric, Dr. Eric Goodman. He was here and was at the library with us. We ended up having about 20 people show up to our two-hour event on strategic planning. Some of the items he covered were how to create a successful strategic plan, creating value for clients and customers, and how to set yourself apart from competition. It's a, it was a very interactive, he was got to spend a lot of time with a lot of the folks that were there. So it was very, very neat and we're going to continue to build on that series probably on a every other month basis. So we got that done. Another item we got to do, we kind of kicked it off this year, is we have our, we had our first membership recruiting event. So we had that on the 22nd of January. We were hosted by Black House back in the back little room. We had 34 people in attendance for that particular event, eight new members. And it was nice to see everybody out and about. Everybody was ready to get out. Everybody wants to network. Everybody wants to come in and see what they're doing and exchange business ideas and great things. So, but, you know, I know a lot of you were there, so we appreciate the support. Beau was there as well and we actually put him on the spot to kind of give us an update on the contract that the town went into with the 90 Days with the Confluence Company. So it was, we kind of put him on the spot and had everybody in that room really fired up and really excited about what you guys are doing with the parcels and with Confluence Companies. And we, as the DBA, want to let you know, we love it. We think it's great. We support it and we're looking forward to see what you guys come up with here. So we had that. We also had our membership meeting in January as well. Weldy was our guest speaker for that particular event. She covered a lot about the improvements in downtown and then also showed us the new updated website for P3. And she talked about all the great things that are going on with the sidewalks, as you guys have all seen and many of you see throughout downtown, everything going on with the sidewalks. So we'll have her back around for the month of August as well to give us a final update after the summer season of construction's kind of taken care of. The other neat, exciting thing that we're talking about is Art Walks. Art Walks is coming back for this year. So Kelly Benson is in charge of that. She's heading that up. She will have a meeting tomorrow and then will give us an update at the DBA meeting this coming Wednesday. So for those of you that are interested in helping out with that, Kelly Benson is your person on that. We also had our board meeting on the 26th of, of January as well, covered a few different items that we're talking about. One of the things we decided to talk about was kind of coming up with some different activities and items and events for the 2022 season. So working on that, getting that all wrapped up. So we should have final dates for some of our signature events coming up and as well as everything else that we're working on. So a busy January and a busy February that we have going. February events, we're going to do Adopt a Street Cleanup on February 12th, this Saturday. So if you guys are looking for something to do at 9:00 AM, we'll see you there, meeting at Music on Main Street. And then we'll have our membership meeting at 9:00 AM this coming Wednesday, the 9th, at the library again. So we'll be at the library for the rest of this year as well as next year. So, and that's all I got for you guys. Any updates or any questions for me?
All right, let's start. Josh?
No, none. So at the membership meeting, if there were new members or potential members that are interested, they could show up at the membership meeting at 9:00 AM at the library?
You got it.
Wednesday?
You got it.
Thanks, sir.
I don't have any questions.
No questions, but thank you for all you do for the DBA.
You bet. Thanks, Todd.
You got that band, didn't you? That he threw out there?
I got the job.
Of course you did.
Can you call me later? I don't, I still don't understand.
Just think of Omar and you've got the band.
No questions, but you are, the year's off to a great start. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Omar, thank you for your creativity and your innovation and your leadership.
Thank you.
It really shows in our community. And I am so excited about you bringing back the Art Walks.
Yeah, you know, that was one of those things where Kelly and her group of folks were super excited about bringing that back and we said, here, have at it, go for it. She's actually got some, when I was with her on Saturday night at an event, I, we were talking a little bit about that and some of the names and some of the people that she brought up, I know a lot of you sitting up here recognize the names of who she's got helping her out. So I think it's going to be really, really cool stuff that she's putting together and she's got that drive and with all the stuff going on in the downtown area, I think it's going to be pretty neat stuff that she's going to do. So thank you.
Thank you for the positive leadership that you're showing for our community. It's much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Appreciate you very much. All right. Moving on to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for town residents and other interested individuals to speak about items that are not on the agenda. This comment period is limited to the first 30 minutes of the meeting and then we'll wrap it up at the end of the meeting if we need to. You must sign up ahead of time if you're in the room. If you want to participate via Zoom and log in, we'll ask you to raise your hand and speak and we'll promote you. And the third way to get public comment in is by an email to the town clerk's office before 5 o'clock on the day of the meeting. I have a number of folks signed up already for public comment here in the room and I will tell you that we'll give you three minutes to speak. You'll see the time up there. And I apologize for butchering your names in advance, but you know, with a name like Toburg, it gets all messed up all the time. So don't, don't take offense to that. But at first up, we have is Ella Daniel. So Ella, I'm going to start your clock here and if you'll give us your name and address for the record and then I'll start your time.
Okay. Hi, I'm Ella Daniel, 23,000 Milford Lane.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Town Council for your time tonight. I am here to voice my concerns about Teen Court's sudden closure. At this program, teen volunteers practice restorative justice for a misdemeanor crime committed by a teen with tailored sanctions that ensure the harm they have done to the community, that they understand the harm they have done to the community and to themselves. The week that Teen Court shut down, there was supposed to be a trial in which the teen now has to go through municipal court. The teen and future teens who commit misdemeanor crimes will now miss the opportunity to be in a conversation amongst the panel of their empathetic peers. Through conversation and trials and panels at this program, many of the teens have revealed that they are struggling with mental health issues, including anxiety, depression, and bipolar disorder. This is further corroborated in a study conducted by Gina Vincent with a PhD in Psychology and Law at Massachusetts Medical School. She finds that 70% of juveniles in the court system have diagnosable mental health disorders. This statistic is alarming when considering the abrupt closure of Teen Court. At this program, volunteers first connect to the teen by finding their interests, strengths, and creating a safe environment rather than the interrogation feeling higher courts can create. In addition to how great this program is for teens, being a part of the Parker Teen Court over the past few years has been an amazing, eye-opening experience, therefore making me deeply saddened to hear that Teen Court will be no longer available for an unforeseeable future. I have been volunteering at Teen Court for three years and has, it has allowed me to gain many skills, including stepping outside of my comfort zone, empathy and advocating for others, and gaining great friendships. Hearing that law school and general legal training was canceled, which was originally planned to occur in April, was a shock. I was very excited to attend law school and was looking forward to volunteering as an attorney in trials. I am also aiming for the goal of 100 community service hours, which I was just shy of receiving through Teen Court. In summary, many of us volunteers are disheartened by the sudden loss of opportunity Teen Court provides for some teens who have made bad decisions and their potential to correct the wrongs through a process of accountability by peers. This sudden closure is impacting my desire to help teens in my, my community and to complete community service hours. Please consider reopening Teen Court as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. You can clap. It's okay. It's okay. Next up, and I'm going to, Radhya Muljadi? Did I get it in your clothes? Come on up. Give us your name for the record and your address for the record. You want to take it down to the, is that better? There you go.
Okay.
Just do your name and address for the record.
Okay. So my name is Radhita Muljadi and I live at 12868 Arezzo Circle, Parker, Colorado 80134.
Okay. And I'll start your time.
Thank you, members of the council, for the privilege and opportunity to speak in front of you today. My name is Radhita Muljadi. I am 12 years old and this is my third year in the Parker Teen Court. Recently, I completed the Parker Teen Court Law School so that I might, I may participate as an attorney in the trials that take place. I started Teen Court the winter of 2019. About three to four months after I joined, COVID-19 hit, temporarily stopping Teen Court activities. We have slowly gone back from that and I don't think that we should stop it again after we've resumed it. As you already know, Teen Court gives benefits to the community, especially the teenagers in Parker. When a teenager gets into trouble, the defendant is consulted by a panel of his or her own peers to acknowledge the poor choices that he or she made and is given a second chance to make it up to the community. Imagine this, you're a Parker teenager who got into trouble and you went through Teen Court. Then not only did you redeem yourself, but you also consistently participated in the program. Then you became interested in law and now you're in law school. Well, guess what? That happened right here through this program. This is just a single example on how the impact of this program is very real and very powerful. Teen Court helps the teenager volunteers as well, including me. The Teen Court activities, with a letter of recommendation from Mrs. Sheridan, had helped me get accepted into the National Junior Honor Society. Teen Court also gives me the chance to meet others with a similar passion for law and jurisprudence. Everything from social gathering, volunteering, and going through the cases together have helped us create personal memories of Teen Court. Joining Teen Court has helped me realize that peer pressure is a very powerful influence over teenagers. I have learned that a good parent-child relationship is important because the parents have already had the life experience to help their kids discern what is right and wrong to keep them out of trouble. Teen Court has also inspired me to become a lawyer and to explore law schools for college. What I went through in Teen Court is priceless and I would love to see others have similar opportunities and wonderful experiences going through Teen Court as all of us. Therefore, I believe that the town of Parker should not pause Teen Court activities and find a way to resume it as soon as possible for the benefit of Parker itself and for the benefit of its teenagers. COVID-19 has adversely impacted everyone's mental health, especially the kids and teenagers of Parker. All of us desperately need to get back on our feet and Teen Court is just one of the avenues that can accomplish that. Thank you once again for the privilege and opportunity to speak in front of you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next up is Nan, Nanaya Vivek? I had to get the last name close, right? Okay. And if you'll state your name and address for the record.
My name is Nanda Vivek and I live on 1220 South Great Plainway.
Great. Go ahead.
So hello, everyone. Thank you so much for your time here today. I'm a teen judge at Teen Court and I've been a volunteer for over three and a half years here. And as a volunteer, I've seen that the, the value that Teen Court can provide to our community. As we all know, recently, there's been some issues with Teen Court and it's been suspended. And though I understand this is a temporary situation, I'm here to talk about why we should open it back as quickly as possible. And I know as town council volunteers, you guys have, or town council members and volunteers, you guys have a good idea of the value that Teen Court brings to our community. I won't bore you with numbers, but on a high level, Teen Court reduces recidivism rates and gives teens a better understanding of the law. And through Teen Court, we're able to guide our fellow teens on a better path for their future. But what would happen if we didn't have the system? It could cause a permanent stain in a young kid's life. A young offender who most often did a mistake unknowingly or due to peer pressure can now run the risk of formal prosecution and possible adjudication. Teen Court is not a free pass for young offenders. Instead, it's educating them on how the legal system works and it shows them the right path like a parent would for their kids. As a town who loves our kids and a town who wants to guide our kids for their future and give them the right path and give them a clean record to start their life, we don't want to produce adults who start their future with a struggle. Let's develop a strong community where kids and parents feel safe, where a community can believe that they are embracing leadership. As leaders and Teen Court members, let's make sure to provide this learning opportunity to our kids and continue Teen Court. Thank you very much for your time here today.
Thank you. Next up is Brayden Parsons, my good friend from Lutheran High School.
There we go. Okay. My name is Brayden Parsons. I live on 17646 East Emilia Drive, Parker.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Toburg and our local city council members. As mentioned before, my name is Brayden Parsons and I am a longtime resident of Parker and current junior at Lutheran High School. Thank you for this time to be able to address you. I want to start this out by just pointing how amazing and unique this current situation is. Me, a high school student, is able to speak before those who represent both my generation and my community. As I'm sure you know, my generation is very, very motivated to make our voices heard. And the fact that I don't need to jump through any hoops just goes to show how modern and fair our local government is. However, I am not just here to comment on this process. I am here to make a difference. I want to ask you all about Parker Teen Court. As I'm sure you know, Parker Teen Court has been put on an indefinite suspension, mostly because of a staffing shortage. I want to ask you all about Parker Teen Court. As I'm sure you know, Parker Teen Court has been put on an indefinite suspension, mostly because of a staffing shortage. I'm here to ask you today to break the social norm of a slow bureaucracy and push for a speedy reopening of Parker Teen Court. I think Teen Court is one of the greatest creations in our judicial system. As many of you know, our justice system, local, state, federal, all of them are considered a revolving door. At Lutheran, I'm part of a class that is basically an in-depth, independent study of a topic of our choosing. Mine happens to be law. For the past year or so, I've studied law in the American legal systems through several large, month-long projects, including a TED Talk presented to my peers. I have found that many career criminals, or criminals in general, have one thing in common: They broke the law as a minor. However, they learn they would only receive a slap on the wrist for breaking the law, the very laws that hold our society together. They receive a general punishment such as community service or probation. Don't get me wrong, those sanctions can be very beneficial, but not to everyone and not in a community that has the resources to do better, a community such as Parker. I've been part of Parker Teen Court for over a year after transferring from Lone Tree Teen Court, and I've even served as a prosecuting attorney on a case earlier this year. I have seen the benefits that Teen Court can provide to both those who break the law and those who volunteer to represent our local community. Teen Court has taught me so much about being a lawyer and has proven to me that that's what I want to pursue in life. I want to help those who are victimized by those who break the law and help those who break the law. There's always a reason. If I have learned anything from studying both our justice system as well as other countries, restorative justice does work. I plead with each and every one of you: Don't let Parker fall in with the other cities who continually postpone and delay important decisions such as this. I know both me and those who join me would be happy to help you in any way possible to reinstate Teen Court. We may go through a rough patch, but that won't stop us from helping as many youth as possible and creating a lasting, positive change that will carry on for generations. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, next up is Leona Cohen.
My name's Leona Cohen, and I live at 5749 Foxton Court.
Okay, go ahead.
Hello, Mayor Toburg and City Council. I have been on Teen Court for a few months now, and I have been enjoying it so much. I got some experience in business and law. I worked very hard to complete the general legal training for this program. When I heard that Teen Court was being canceled, I was very sad and disappointed. I would also like to touch up the base on the impact Teen Court had on the community. Every person that was a defendant for Teen Court was a first-time offender. Many of these teenagers just made a one-time mistake. Teen Court has a chance for these first-time offenders to have a redo, a do-over. The offense did not go the defender's, on the defender's record. This made it so the defenders, defendants again, had a chance for a do-over. I am very passionate about Teen Court, and I loved the experiences program gave me as well as my peers. I ask that you would consider reopening Teen Court because of the work we, as a Teen Court, have put into this, and for the positive impact Teen Court had on this community. I thank you for taking the time to listen to me today. Thank you.
All right, next up is Olivia Lombard.
Good evening, I'm Olivia Lombard. My address is 5623 North Irish Pat Murphy Drive. Good evening. Again, my name is Olivia Lombard. I have been a part of the Parker Teen Court for five years. I started off as a jury member and now currently a judge. The years I have been here, I have seen lots of change and growth of new and old members. I have seen kids from not the best situations change and go back on the right path. Many kids that have gone through Teen Court want to stay around because Teen Court makes them feel special and it's something to be a part of. It is still fun watching members deliberate during trials or panels and watching their minds think of ways to help the defendant. This program gave me something to be a part of and learn parts of the justice system. Being here for so long has given me a chance to help and influence new members. Ms. Carolyn has done so much for this program, and she has worked so hard to make sure everyone who comes in is treated with lots of respect and makes it a special place. She's made an impact on me and my family. In 2021, I was a part of the 9/11 flag ceremony. This was a special event that Teen Court was able to participate in and represent the town. This is just one of the special activities Teen Court has been a part of. Getting members into the community is important and makes good memories to be with friends. The sudden pause and uncertainty of Teen Court has made a huge impact on the members. There's been lots of sadness and confusion on what's going on. Teen Court has survived the recent COVID-19 pandemic, and we hope that it is able to survive whatever made it stop suddenly. Seeing all these members talk tonight showed that this program really meant a lot to them, myself, and the town. It may be my time to retire from Teen Court, but I hope for a positive future from the Parker Teen Court. Thank you again for your time tonight.
Thank you. And last up is Gigi Lombard. You want to pull it down to the table? Is that easier?
Yeah.
There you go. It's just going to fall halfway through, right?
Yeah. Okay. My name is Gigi, and my address is 5623 Irish Pat Murphy Drive.
Okay, go ahead.
Today, we are here because of the recent closure of Teen Court. As you've heard from all of my peers over here, they're part of the Teen Court too, and we're all very sad about the closure. When a defendant comes through Teen Court, they get a second chance of making themselves better and making their community better. They get community service hours, and they get jury duties, a chance to join us and see what we experience and what we hear from defendants like them and what they go through. We hear many stories about their mental illness and their family issues, and we hear many stories about what brought them to commit a defense. Without this program, minors will go through municipal court, meaning they'll get sanctions that may not help or impact the defendant as much as Teen Court will. I personally believe that Teen Court helps these kids understand what they did was wrong in a way that they understand instead of a way that adults understand, because kids think differently than adults do. Ms. Carolyn has definitely helped me with my public speech and social skills and writing skills throughout this program. I've been a part of this program for a while now, and I definitely think I have learned a lot from, from this program. I've made a great connection with many people who also volunteer here, and a lot of people who have been a defendant in Teen Court have joined Teen Court because they see how Teen Court has affected them and they want to make a change too. When I'm older, I want to become a lawyer, make a difference, and joining Teen Court has definitely made me feel like I can make a difference. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else that wants to talk on the Teen Court subject that didn't sign up? Okay, so I'm going to break. We usually don't answer to public comment, but I'm going to take a break from that just for a second, and I want to say this. We've got two folks in the room, our town administrator and one that works for her, our deputy town administrator, who I know tomorrow are going to get at least seven emails from us saying, "How fast can we move this along?" We heard you. We heard you. But I want to say this to you guys, and I see you in Town Hall all the time. I see you at the Flags of Honor Ceremony that you put on, on 9/11. We hear you. We hear exactly what you're saying. But I want to take this moment, I want to take this moment and say, don't think for one second this is about you and that we're not going to bring this program back. We value it because we know what it does for you. We know what it does for you, but moreover, we know what you're doing for this community, and that's what's important. To be tried, you know, as an adult, I get the opportunity, I hope not, but be tried by jury by my peers, right? We afford that to our teens, and that's powerful. You have the powerful, you have the power position in those young people's lives, and we want to respect that. So be patient with us. This has nothing to do with you. Sometime, the adults need to get that kick and get going faster than we normally would. So we'll get this, we'll get this corrected. And I know our deputy town administrator, Danette Robinson, will be in touch with your parents as, as we've kept that email communication going. We'll let you know what's going on, and we'll, and we'll get it fixed. Great. Anyone else in the room wishing to make public comment on an item not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll check with Zoom to see if there's anybody on Zoom.
Okay, there are a few people on Zoom. If you would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. No comments.
Okay. And I don't believe we received any emails. So we will move on to comments from council and mayor. We'll start to my right with Councilor Rivero.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, my heartfelt condolences to the Cassianos. Incredible man. I would not be sitting up here without, without him. He tapped my shoulder one day, and, and here I am. So I am taken aback, still digesting, and a very, very sad loss for the town, and, but we'll get through it. With that, I will take a moment, if I can, to speak to Teen Court. Again, I'm sitting up here not for Teen Court, but for a restorative justice program. See, I was not a, I was not a good kid when I was young. And I got taught some lessons, but I got taught through restorative justice. So I'm heavily a believer of second chances, and as somebody put it, a do-over. Teen Court was, Parker was one of the first. I had the pleasure of chairing the Douglas County Youth Initiative for six years. I handed that baton to Jay Carpenter from Lone Tree, and we successfully got Lone Tree to have a Teen Court. And everybody's going through their problems right now, and I know it's very, very tough, but Teen Court is incredibly important to this county. To have an alternate, to have a restorative justice program that is alternate to, quote-unquote, "the system" means everything to this county. It means everything to me, and I know it means everything to this council, and as you heard from the mayor, it means a lot, a lot to him. So we are going to work hard, and I don't know what it's going to take, but my favorite thing tonight was break the slow bureaucracy. Absolutely. I fully, fully agree. We need to break the slow bureaucracy, and I think there are plenty of volunteers in this community. If we don't have a staff position, then maybe it's a position that we take volunteers. Maybe there are jurists and lawyers out there that want to come and help us. I mean, I will volunteer my time, whatever it takes. I don't know if Carolyn has the time to train me, but if we have to, we will figure this out. I make that promise to you guys. I don't make a lot of promises sitting up here, but I'm making this one. We're going to get it done. So thank you very, very much for your words. Truly appreciate it.
Thanks, sir. Councilor Pogue.
Yeah, I too have been involved on the adult side of restorative justice for a number of years, and I do appreciate the value of that program. So we'll see what happens here as soon as possible. So also, we were at the Senate hearings on RTD. It was a long afternoon coming home in a snowstorm, but, you know, they did not pass it out of committee, but we left that with Senator Smallwood calling us in, and we had a lot of good discussion on future action to bring this thing back forward. So, you know, that's, I think it was an important, important action to take by this council, and I feel that we need to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, my condolences to the Cassiano family. He was my first mayor when I moved to Parker, and he'll be missed. Also, last week, Parker Task Force celebrated their 35th year of existence, so I volunteer there a lot with my son, and it's a great organization. So, congrats to them. And finally, to you teens, Teen Court, good job. I wish I could speak like that when I was your age, and actually today. But we hear you and we support you, and I'm, I'm sure your parents are proud of you for doing, coming here today and speaking to us, and we will get this fixed.
Councilman Day.
Thank you very much. I attended an advancing Lincoln Avenue meeting with particular emphasis on the I-25 and Lincoln interchange. It's the very early stages of how do they improve that interchange? I also chaired the Douglas County Subregional Forum, Transportation Forum. One item of note, in concert with Councilmember Pogue's comments, was a high-level discussion on creating a plan, a Northern Douglas County Transit Multimodal and Mobility Study.
Bureaucracy. Sorry.
Yeah. You know, quite honestly, all of the communities within Douglas County come together and talk about challenges, and when, when we have a challenge, we recognize that others potentially have similar challenges. And, you know, once you start talking about it, things start to happen after a while. So, you know, the first step is getting in front of that microphone and talking. So, you know, so what, what happens is if we have a problem and we verbalize that, and then all of a sudden, we get together to try to solve those problems. So, within this forum, we have the county, which we have a Commissioner Teal, and he, he took notice of, of what we were trying to do. We've had discussions over a number of months on how can we get better and what do we need? So this, this mobility study is something which I think would be very valuable for Douglas County and for Parker specifically, to attempt to solve some of our, our transportation needs that may affect the, the youth, quite honestly. So, you know, with, with that, we were all verbalizing our challenges, and the county stepped up and said, yeah, we will, we will figure out a way to create a plan so we can figure out solutions. So that was a, that was a positive. And I spent a couple days last week interviewing executive director candidates for the E470 Tollway Authority, and with that is, that is all.
Excellent. Councilor Barrington.
I also want to extend my condolences to the Cassiano family. He had so many friends, and he was definitely a mentor to so many people, so he will be missed. Thank you, everybody, for coming in and speaking tonight. It was very heartfelt, and you are all extremely eloquent speakers, and I think a lot of us can, maybe you can come and just, if you have some extra time, give us some, some tips on public speaking. So, and I'm just going to concede the rest of my time in light of the time.
Councilmember Hafda.
Again, my heartfelt condolences go out to Mayor Cassiano and his, and his family. I'd also like to say, you know, during this time, people are still suffering from COVID-19. There's still a lot of people out there that are getting hospitalized and dying in the community at far too young an age, and my, my heart goes out to those folks as well that have been suffering, not only in Colorado, but all across the country. Also, the Teen Court, I am so excited that I'm going to have future members of the Colorado Bar, that all of you spoke so eloquently tonight, from the youngest to the oldest. I'm astounded how eloquent and polished and professional you all are at such a young age. So that's a great credit to all of you, that you've worked so hard and you're helping your fellow teens in the community. So thank you. Lastly, the Douglas County Homeless Initiative Executive Committee meeting. I'm a member of that, and I did meet with Police Chief Sarapis, Attorney Jamie Nguyen, Officer Trey Byles, and Clinician Ayesha Henry last week, because this is a new committee in Douglas County to address the homeless population, and so we are currently gathering statistics on what that looks like in Douglas County and also in Parker. And so I got a, a great briefing from all the folks at the police department. Special shout out to Chief Sarapis for being so willing to help me with that, understand what this looks like. And I also like to mention that our Community Response Team of Officer Trey Byles and Clinician Ayesha Henry does address a lot of those mental health issues which the Teen Court members today spoke of. We have many adults in our community that suffer from mental health issues and emotional issues, and we have a special team in the Community Response Team that goes out with the officer to address those issues when they need to come in, and so we want to thank them for all their hard work in the Parker community. Thank you.
Thank you. Just, it's been a busy week for me as well. On Monday, the 31st, I attended Catholic Schools Week kickoff at Ave Maria. What an amazing group of young people were out there. On Tuesday, we testified at the State Capitol on our RTD bill, and certainly want to thank Senator Smallwood, not only for his preparation, but his support during that. I echo Councilmember Pogue's sentiments, and I think it was very positive, and thank Councilmember Hendricks for attending as well. On Wednesday, I attended the Metro Mayor's Caucus Annual, or the monthly meeting remotely, and then I had a chance to go on a ride along with our snowplow operators during the big, big snow, and I believe I heard Mr. Gilbert's name on the radio once or twice. I think you were out there with us as well. So I will have to say this: No people in Parker love their jobs better than those snowplow operators. They're up at 4 o'clock, and they are, they are amazing people. I felt like I was holding them back because I had to stop every couple hours, but you know, it was, it was amazing nonetheless. On Friday and Saturday, along with former Mayor Greg Lopez, I attended memorial ceremonies and spoke. On Friday and Saturday, along with former Mayor Greg Lopez, I attended memorial ceremonies and spoke about our good friend Mayor Cassiano, and just what an amazing man echoing our council sentiments. And then on Sunday, to wrap it up, I attended the Health for Humanity Yogathon. And I pray those pictures never get out, but yes, I did yoga at the end.
Oh, they will.
And I, I wish I had a body double for that because my body's still aching today. But I joined my council members from Centennial out there at the Hindu Temple of the Rockies, and it was a pretty amazing event. So with that, we will close comments and go on to our one item of the night, which is the consent calendar. Council, you have items 7A through 7J4 on for your consent tonight. There's no questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve consent agenda items A through J, please.
I'll second. Motion was made by Councilman Rivero, seconded by Councilmember Pogue. This will be a roll call. Rivero.
Aye.
Pogue.
Aye.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Dyak.
Yes.
Barrington.
Yes.
And with no other business before the Parker Town Council, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. I'll second.
And motion was made by Councilman Rivero, seconded by Councilmember Dyak. Again, a roll call. Rivero.
Aye.
Pogue.
Aye.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Dyak.
Yes.
Barrington.
Yes.
Hefta.
Yes.
And we're adjourned at 8:11.
Mayor, if you could just give me a second?
Okay, hold on, let's get it re-synced here. Thank you, Josh. I just thought you were giving tropical vibes here, and you know.
We live with tropical vibes, yeah. My name is Ty Poe. I live in Aurora, so 7564 South Sicily Way, but I will be opening a Trader Joe's grocery store in the coming months, and we just wanted to come and say hi. The Trader Joe's company, we work really closely with the community. So, yeah, you'll see us in all these events that were spoken of, and we look forward to it. We'll become, begin hiring in a couple months.
This meeting is being recorded.
Sorry.
Yeah, well, we'll need 50 or 60 fine people to run our grocery store. So, yeah, if you know people that want to apply, well, that'll be happening soon.
Excellent. So we'll take this a little bit out of for public comment. Council questions?
I've, I've heard about your store before. Can you elaborate what it's about?
Yeah, it's, so we're a grocery store. We started in California over 50 years ago, kind of smaller stores. We, we call them neighborhood stores. So ours is going to be the Parker store. So we're working on, right now, I've, some of my crew working on murals that will like sort of celebrate Parker, its history and, you know, sort of its present. Yeah, we sell groceries and, yeah. Most of it's our own brand, so our, our own label, so save a few bucks that way. And, yeah, it's, we pride ourselves on what we call a wow customer experience. So a lot of friendly folks will even learn your names and that kind of thing.
Oh, I can tell you a lot of people are excited.
Absolutely. Cheryl, any questions?
Yeah, do you have a target opening date?
We don't, so it keeps getting pushed back, but just supply chain issues and things and construction. So hopefully, in the next couple months, I'll, we'll be there hiring. And then, yeah, I don't even know when I'm reporting yet. I'm at a store in Denver currently, so.
Oh, well, I've shopped at the one in Arlington, Massachusetts.
Okay.
And the one on Orchard and University.
I used to run that one maybe six years ago, so. This will be my eighth Trader Joe's. I opened the one in Littleton about five years ago, so I'm looking, I'm excited, yeah.
Awesome. Josh?
So are you, if this is your eighth, are you on the opening crew, or are you going to be the GM?
Yeah, we, yeah, the store manager, I'm, Trader Joe's calls me the captain. So, and then Ashley over here will be what's called one of my mates, which is like an assistant manager, so. Yes, and I'll be opening it, opening it with, I'm bringing about, I don't know, about 20 veteran crew members with me, and then the rest will hire from the community.
And then you're looking to buy a home here in Parker?
No, I live.
Just kidding. Trick question.
No, it's great because I live, I, I'm as, as southern in Aurora as you can get. I live right up the Garth exit. And so I shop all the time in Parker, and so my commute is about a quarter what it would be. So I'm tired of driving into Denver.
So that's, that's Jeff Sam's. He's the chamber board, so you should chat with him.
For sure.
Yeah, I think Councilmember Bergen in Aurora is your council member too, so if you have any issues, I'll be happy to connect you with her too. But no, I, I think everybody is, is anxious for you to open. I mean, there have been names throughout my tenure here that have come up consistently, and Trader Joe's is one of them. So it sounds like people are clamoring to get into your facility to buy those groceries. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Barrington.
This is just going to set me up for all sorts of ridicule, but will you have a liquor license?
We will only have, we'll only sell beer.
So no Two Buck Chuck?
No, the, yeah, like the law, like the Colorado laws don't allow it. I think we're too close to the Costco, other loopholes, but yeah, just beer, so unfortunately. It's weird running a Trader Joe's without being able to sell the wine, so.
Councilmember Hefta.
Will you have an eating area of any sort within the facility?
I don't believe so. Our stores are pretty small, so I'll jam-pack it with stuff that we sell. But yeah, they will, we do have like a really good selection of grab-and-goes, so I think there'll be a lot of kind of, like, well, I'm sure we'll have a lunch rush kind of thing, so.
Excellent. Well, so as a 52-year-old from that other C state, I've grown up with Trader Joe's. My kids have, you know, ate literally Joe-Zo's all of their lives, so we're excited you're here. We're so excited you're here.
We are too.
Council, any other questions? All right.
I have one. Are you going to be selling your famous pizza dough?
Yes.
Thank you.
You got big fans up here, you got big fans.
Right, right.
And we'll get Todd trained up on what, and Ann on what Trader Joe's does.
Yes. We'll bring goodie bags once we have food, so.
Awesome, awesome. Well, thank you guys for attending tonight. Appreciate it, appreciate it. We're still adjourned.